Ay, look, this is for entertainment purposes only. Explicit motherfucking content. Parental guidance is strongly suggested. Pay attention to what your kids doing on the internet. Subscribe, like, share. Smoking for me the podcast. Let's get into the show. Wakey, wakey, goddammit, time to shake you something. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, welcome to another episode. You already know what it is. You click the button. This is a special session. You already knew that. I told you, you knew that because you knew that, goddammit. If you didn't know that, now you know that now.
Yeah, he knows it.
We in this motherfucker with Jada Juice Man. Jada Juice Man, say something to the people.
Yo, 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 Jada Juice Man, Ben had the juice, man.
Oh, ay, okay. Already, goddamn, we got X in this motherfucker. Say some Xenia, goddamn. Bob Daques in this bitch. And me, you know me, I'm Reverend Kato Jackson. Thank you for joining us for another special session in this bitch.
Yeah.
Probably shouldn't be cussing so early in the video.
Yeah, we keep talking about how we gonna work on that.
Day before Easter.
Day before, it is the day before.
The day before Easter. We acting like this.
No, you is, that's right.
I got my Easter colors on.
That's right.
I've been addicted to dealers, all my colors, Easter colors today, goddamn. Or this week. Ah, shit, I don't know. Welcome to, welcome, Jada Juice Man.
Started off real quick, real quick. Tell the people where they can find you or where they can locate whatever it is that we got going on today because we want to get that out there off rip before we even get into shit.
All right, you can find me at George and Fletcher on Facebook. Big underscore J underscore Wade eighty-seven on Instagram. Snapchat. Uh, yeah, Big J trying to have my way every day.
Snapchat is?
Nah, man, it's just, it's just me trying to have my way. Big J way, like Alito.
Okay, then. Jay Lito's way.
J A Y, W A Y?
Yeah, J A Y.
Okay.
Okay, then, already. Tell them what, what you got for them? Tell them about these juices, goddammit.
Oh, yeah, man.
The only nigga I know from the hood that sells some juices, and these bitches good. I thought it was some liquor in the juices.
Nah, man, it make you want to put something in it though.
It make you want to put something in there.
That's the first thing they think about when they get it.
We put something in there, goddammit. Y'all check out the drink of the week, goddammit. It's, it's some juices in there.
Yeah, right now I got a pineapple lemonade, watermelon lemonade. I got one coming out, uh, called California Breeze.
California Breeze.
Yeah, cuz how you feel when you drink it?
I don't feel like you're here in the goddamn.
Like you in Cali, you ain't never been. That's that feeling you get. You feel like you in Cali.
Yeah, you got it here convertible.
You gotta put your, you gotta put your pinky up when you drink.
Y'all don't know shit about no drop top drinks.
See, we know something about one now.
Yeah.
California Breeze.
California Breeze is on the way.
Sounds smooth as hell. How the fuck, how you, how you start selling juices? Tell me about this shit.
Well, first of all, I'm saying, um, my granddad, man, uh, he used to always make a juice, some lemonade at his house. And every time I go to his house, man, if I don't expect nothingness, I know he got it in the fridge.
That wouldn't have liquor in it.
Yeah.
Not the one for the kids.
Nah, that was on the bottom drawer. You know what I'm saying? The bottom, he ain't leave that, that was in the bottom drawer, whatever.
Not the one for the kids.
But, uh, nah, he, uh, he used to always make this lemonade, uh, and, uh, he, uh, once, I had went over to his house, he was sick. He, uh, he had got cancer and, uh, I asked him, uh, his granddad, man, where you, uh, where that lemonade is? He said, uh, man, I can't be making that lemonade no more, man. My body can't take it. He said, so, uh, I'll show you how to make some though.
Nah, it's on you.
Oh, yeah, he showed me how to make it.
Family recipe.
Oh, yeah, granddad, so, you know what I'm saying? So when he showed me, I, um, I went in, uh, I went to my house to make some. And, uh, my friend, you know, my friend was over there, she was like, uh, go on, uh, put something else, we put some more flavors in it. And, uh, but she drunk and she got hyped, so she was like, you know what I'm saying? Like, she is so good, make me slap your grandma.
No!
You can sell, you can sell that, so, um, I decided to, um, sell it. I had, I mean, my partner, uh, Bujo, my day one, you know what I'm saying?
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Let's slow this down real quick. So, he taught you how to make this recipe?
Yeah.
And you went home and the very first time you tried it, you nailed it?
Yeah.
And then you, and then you revamped it and made it even better?
Yeah.
Right out, cuz I, I, I'm asking cuz it's some shit my dad cooks to this day. Simple ass shit, but it's, I, I, I know how to make it, but I can't never make it and it don't taste like when this nigga make it.
That mean this was meant to be. See, if they don't, if they don't pass on the recipe, you ain't gonna never make it right.
Nah, he, he didn't gave me the recipe.
Nah, I'll give it to you different. Pass on me and I ain't doing it no more, you doing that.
Oh, okay.
If they still doing it, you ain't gonna never make it right.
We got it, we got it.
It ain't gonna be, you can't beat competition. Ain't gonna be no competition.
They say sometimes a student surpasses the teacher though.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, yeah, that, that happens.
I ain't saying I surpassed my granddad cuz he was one of the best men I ever knew.
Yeah.
But it's this lemonade though.
So you and, you and Jay, J Mo, J Bo?
Jay.
Jay. You and him did, what, what happened next? Had you?
Bujo, oh, you talking about my partner, Bujo.
Bujo.
Oh, yeah.
I just mixed all the letters up.
Who the fuck is J Bo?
I just remember where we, where I stopped you at. It was somewhere in this name with letters. All right, my bad, Bujo.
He always, you know what I'm saying, y'all, man, Jay, you, you a hustler, you be, you'll sell anything. I said, man, what you think I get, uh, a hundred jugs of that, uh, a hundred gallons of that lemon, um, jug from the, uh, houses? I said, you think I sell a hundred of stuff? I sell a hundred. You call me the goat. He said, man, you sell a hundred jugs, I'm gonna call you the goat.
Fuck it.
Man, shoot, you know what I'm saying? Oh, in a week, I think I only know it in a week, man, uh, a hundred all over, I went back and got some more jugs. You know what I'm saying? But, um, it's, uh, it's something I played, played around with in the beginning, you know what I'm saying? I off and on with just selling it. Cuz I, it's been doing like two years, I was just playing around with it and, uh, yeah. So now I'm just, I'm keeping it in their face.
That's how you gotta do that. If you thirsty, fuck with Jada Juice Man. If you need some hydration, you fuck with Jada Juice Man.
True.
If you just want something that tastes fucking good.
You fuck with Jada Juice Man.
You wanna feel good when you standing in front of your refrigerator with the door open? But you know it's something that good to drink.
If you know that Jada Juice Man sit there.
I told, I told you earlier off camera, I'm gonna have, have to hide this from my kids. I'm not gonna let them drink up all my juice.
Yeah, the kids gonna fuck that juice up.
They gonna fuck that juice up.
Put the special juice in the bottle.
You should have bought them some anyway.
You should have bought them.
You know better.
Ain't nothing you can get, this ain't nothing you can get at the store now. You gotta get from Jay, the motherfucking Juice Man.
We finna get it in the store soon.
Oh, yeah, he's coming to the store. I'm, uh, you know, I'm just right now, you first you gotta lay the foundation, then you build a house.
Already, that's how you make a house.
The foundation ain't laid, you, your house gonna fold.
It's gonna fall off. They gonna huff and puff and blow that bit off.
Rome wasn't built overnight, so you know what I'm saying? You on rich.
I love it, yeah.
How long it take?
Rev, you gonna hit one of yours?
We got a question for you. I told you. We got, we got a survey.
Oh, yeah.
And we like to ask everybody cuz we trying to figure some shit out.
Okay.
Um, do you pee in the pool? Do you pee in the pool?
Every, yeah, I pee in the, I done peed in the pool, pee in the pool.
All the time. Like, have you ever had to pee and got out the pool to go pee?
Nah, they got so much chlorine in it, they, they tell you, fuck it.
Well, I don't know best what it's for, but, all right, this, you know, I saw a video, I learned some shit. I saw this video.
Okay.
Um.
Let's learn.
Chlorine. Dude took two buckets of water, two complete, four buckets, five gallon water, goddamn. Put way too much chlorine in both buckets.
Mm-hmm.
Put a little bit of pee in one bucket, left them sitting overnight. The one that had no pee in it smelled like fucking water, straight water, no chlorine. The one that had a little bit of pee in it smelled like fucking chlorine.
And that's why the pool smell like chlorine.
So every pool you smell that smells like pool water, it's full of pee, goddammit.
There you go.
I just learned this shit. I just learned that shit.
And that's what the chlorine smells.
It smell like, cuz it's pee in there.
Wow.
If it wasn't no pee in there, you would never smell the chlorine.
I was wondering why my eyes get the burning.
Useless facts, useless facts.
And if you would have never watched that video, you would have known that you would have fucked up like half the world cuz everybody pee in the pool.
Everybody pee in the pool. That's why we taking this survey.
Yeah.
We trying to see, and most people pee in the pool.
And after this is on podcast, they still gonna be peeing in the pool.
They are, they are.
They still gonna do it.
I did out here used to bear.
I'm not peeing in the pool, yo.
So.
Get away from me.
My partner over here, he had gained some superpowers.
Superpower.
The camp is here! He got them. He just woke up one day, special fucking power.
It is what it is.
It's a weird fucking power now.
I wasn't asked.
He asked the power to make one wish come true for every guest to come on our show.
And you happen to be here.
But.
Congratulations.
With all powers, with all, what, what they say, with all, something comes great responsibility, yeah. However that shit go, it got, got, goddamn consequence.
Yeah, this one come with consequence, not responsibility.
Whatever you want, somebody random gotta die. You don't know who that is, you don't know what they died from, but you, a random person dropped dead, boom. You gonna find out once they die, this who it was. It could be somebody, grandmama, she was finna die anyway. It could be somebody, baby, brand new baby, dead as hell.
Could somebody be somebody that's, uh, in a coma or in a vegetable state?
Could be, could be.
Could be somebody that just wanna gold medal.
Fucked up question, ain't it?
But whatever you're asking for can only be something that is tangible, literal, understandable. My superpower doesn't give you superpowers.
Hey, you gotta be able to touch it or like point to it, like, that's mine right there.
And you have to have details for your thing.
All right, so it can't be nothing like, uh, I wish for everybody in the world to have one wish.
Absolutely. Absolutely not.
That's dope, though. That's a dope wish.
So if, if it's money, you get a hundred dollar bill cuz that's the biggest money.
You have to say an exact amount or something.
No, you still, and you get one.
It's just one, yeah, cuz you only get one of what you say.
So, that just, that just excludes money. Just don't say money, cuz everybody gonna say money. Don't say money.
Can I have unlimited life, love, money, superpowers?
You gotta have something like, you can show off, like, this is, this is what I have.
We had one guest that wanted a field. They wanted their own field, like a certain amount of acres.
So they can frolic.
Yes, and go do whatever they want to do in the field.
But, ay, you can have it.
That's what you want.
The baby gonna die, but you can get it.
Maybe the baby will die.
Maybe, somebody gonna die.
Somebody's gonna die.
What you want?
You don't get to pick who dies.
If, if, if you don't pick, everybody dies. Except for you. So you own this motherfucker by yourself.
So you will be the richest, like, most powerful person then?
You will have anything you want, but you'll be by yourself. So you gotta pick for real.
I want the master, uh, keyboard to Equifax bill.
The master key to the Equifax bill.
The master keyboard to the system, how to say so.
So you want control of Equifax?
Nah, cuz your baby died, I'm gonna make your life bill, make, make your family life bill with your credit. I'm a real nigga.
You just gonna make everybody credit better.
Hey, that's what, hey.
That's dope as fuck.
You got them making your credit bill, the life bill, the stress bill.
Can he just get fired?
Why can't make your bet, life better?
Oh, they could just be like, where the fuck our keyboard at? Turn this bitch off.
You got another one. Yeah, like somebody got our keyboard.
That's why I said the final say so.
I feel like you want control of Equifax.
Because remember, they come with consequences.
You wanna own Equifax, I guess.
Yeah.
I guess, I mean, he can have it. I don't know what reward that gets you for real.
It ain't gonna just get me though. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, see.
But if everybody credit good, then.
It ain't for everybody though.
Credit no more.
It ain't for everybody.
It's only for the person who died?
Yo, who, who deserved it, cuz everybody got it.
So everybody you fuck with.
Not everybody, everybody I fuck with don't need good credit. I know, I know you.
Damn.
I know you.
That's a real ass shit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm logical now, like, I'm, you know, I'm logical.
Let me get like an A fifty.
Some people when they grew up, wasn't taught, or don't even have the brain capacity to have good credit, but just cuz they, just cuz they mentally unable, don't mean they just don't, don't deserve a good lifestyle.
Yeah.
They just don't got, they don't have the means to fix that credit, don't have a means to, uh, learn how to do credit, cuz hell, like, the shit fucked up. You know some people that around, around you grew up that like, just can't get a fair chance because they mentally unable.
I can say, I can say that, yeah, I agree.
So, you know what I'm saying? You know somebody like, that deserved it versus.
But their credit score ain't gonna fix that.
Man, you crazy.
They don't know shit about their credit score, no way.
You got people that getting, uh, first of the month checks, paying, it ain't a bad neighborhood because this is what's affordable for them, but if they credit straight, well, dude, they can get them a house and pay six, five hundred dollars for a house.
You can't get mortgage for that.
They gotta be paying on their credit though.
But if I'm able, if I'm, you able to change that for them because they deserve it, hey, if they getting seven, eight hundred dollars a month on a, on a check, who can afford to pay extra?
I think this is the most wholesome motherfucking answer we've ever had.
I'm sorry, why are we hating on this?
Yeah. We can't deal with all this fucking wholesomeness.
You get an eight hundred dollar check a month, your rent, your rent six hundred, your light bill one, your light bill a hundred, you gotta get groceries.
What we doing?
You might, you might, you, you might wanna go to a movie.
We're not used to good niggas.
Long as we make the wish, I'm good.
That couch right over there, that couch right, means chairs wrong.
Then the baby died, everybody got damn.
What made you go from the original recipe to bring out the second one? Cuz we know you, you got a third one coming. How'd you, what happened between the first and the second one for you to make that decision?
To make the third one?
Nah, just to make the second one. How you go from, I got this recipe, I perfected it, it's good, I'm doing it the right way, I'm selling gallons? Did you add a second flavor when you were selling the gallons?
Uh, yeah, when I started selling them, I had to say.
So you started with two.
With two? Okay, and now you just, so what made you jump to the three?
Uh, because, you know, um, everybody, this, this a world of options. Juice, cars, jobs, uh, partners, sexual partner, uh, where you wanna live, you ain't got no option when you got two juices, you ain't need three.
Okay.
Three flavors, four, five, you know what I'm saying? Coke ain't got just one flavor.
So they coming out there.
Yeah, cuz everybody don't just like coke.
They did for a long time though. They did for a long time.
There's a reason they liked the coke though.
Cuz it dope was in those?
Yeah, at first, they, they didn't have it.
Cuz they fucking, they was hooked on this shit.
And then coke, like, their stuff had just jumped out. So evolution made, you know what I'm saying, made most of.
They do got hella flavors now though.
Yeah.
And then Sprite came, like, no, they racist, you can't just have no dog skin drink.
What, what's been, um, what's some of the things that stick out to you that you feel like you learned just because you been doing this? That maybe you wouldn't have picked up in the same way if you hadn't have been trying to make these moves with the juice?
Well, um, ah, yeah. You got the replay on your phone, man. You was saying my little, little baby.
Ay, the baby.
Nah, but, yeah, you, um, uh. What was that question again?
I forgot too.
You're laughing, see, that's a, that's a problem. We laughing, you forget like, what was just for the answer? I've seen the phone through it, yeah.
I'm tired of it, he ain't got no excuse.
What? What made you, uh, go to the, you said you had different options and stuff like that, and that's why you, you wanted different options, and that's why you went to the third one? So, oh shit, I forgot now too.
Man, no guy.
Damn, I had it too.
Smoking is permitted, ladies and gentlemen.
Yep, yeah, that's what it do to you.
Who did you try to heroes? Did you have some heroes?
I know what it was. What, what, um, I'm sorry, we go back to the heroes. Don't forget, heroes, heroes, heroes.
Not a sandwich either, though.
Those two, you could have a favorite sandwich.
I guess you can.
What's some of the stuff that you learned during this journey that you wouldn't have learned if you hadn't have been doing this already? Uh, for the last couple of years or what?
Yeah, yeah.
I told you it was right there, but right when you asked me, then I forgot it, goddamn, but, yeah.
Yeah, um, I've never been, everybody might think, you know what I'm saying, I got everything together, or I had life just figured out, or, you know, when you, when you stand up in class, you know what I'm saying, they ask you what you wanna be? Everybody stood up, I wanna be astronaut, I wanna do this. I mean, that's cuz what you knew at the time, but I've never been a person that said, I wanna be this.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Uh, I wanna do that. But, uh, doing this, um, I looked at all multiple things I did in my life, and when I'm selling, I drive trucks, you know what I'm saying? So I do that Monday through Friday, and I ain't, that ain't, I, I don't do it cuz I'm happy with it, I do it cuz that's what make money right now, yeah. Yeah. But, uh, with the juice, I guess, um, when I'm selling it, it's like adrenaline. Like, you don't even recognize, you know what I'm saying? Like, I like sales.
Yeah.
I like selling stuff.
Hell.
You know what I'm saying?
You get the big one to this shit for real, no matter what.
Success, making people happy.
Yeah.
But not just making it sell for real, just the transaction for real.
All of that is what, all of that's in that transaction?
Yeah. I'm, uh, I done had people like, I, with the juice, you know what I'm saying? Cuz I, you see how I come in, I already came here to talk and stuff about, you know what I'm saying? I ain't gonna say nothing I can't, you know what I'm saying? I don't know. You gotta be able to stand behind it, so, uh, I had people I'd try to sell the juice to and they wanna buy it, and, uh, so I end up getting it to them, like, huh, you can have it. And they end up, they pay me food.
Now they wanna buy.
Yeah, they gonna pay me food. Yeah, you ain't even got, I was like, man, you ain't even gotta pay me, it ain't good, it's cool.
It's worth it though, goddamn.
But I just want you to know you tried, cuz a lot of people like, I'm a type of person, if somebody says something nasty, I ain't gonna try it, cuz I'm real picky.
Hell.
You know what I'm saying? So I don't just try anything.
So you want a motherfucker to know, like, bitch, this is good, goddamn it.
Yeah.
Everybody, spread the word, Jada Juice Man, hot juice, goddamn it.
True.
Tell everybody, I stand behind it, this shit is delicious, goddamn it.
But you gonna have to be able to hear some people tell you it's nasty, it's too sweet, or it, this is dead, or you know what I'm saying? Because, I mean, that ain't they taste.
Hell, so everybody ain't gonna like it.
For every one, two people here say this, gonna be twenty of them, like, ay, man, I need some more. What's your number? What's your, uh, what's your social media? So, I mean, you gonna be out, be able to hear that somebody tell you it's, it ain't, it ain't they taste, but that's, I mean, that's them.
Tell them again, what's your social media?
Uh, George and Fletcher, Facebook, Big underscore J underscore Wade eighty-seven, Instagram, and on Snap.
Goddamn, what we doing? You can't hear them?
Yeah, he was going in and out.
Oh, shit.
All right.
Um, yeah, childhood heroes though.
Yeah.
Uh, childhood heroes, uh.
He-Man.
Transformers.
I like, see, I'm just saying those are things I like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get my chat, my, uh, I, if I had anything, the turtles, cuz turtles always got my ass whooped.
Man.
No.
The turtles, or I'm watching, I'm Bloodsport, John Clavine, man. You know what I'm saying? I'm watching, yeah, cuz I'm trying to move when I get through.
When he was like, I wanna grow up and be like this.
Yeah, like somebody, not for real, like somebody, like, did, was like Michael Jordan, someone, did you get inspired by somebody? Did you have somebody that you was always like, when I grow up, I'm gonna be like this, or I like this person because they make me wanna do this, kinda thing?
Nah.
Me either.
Hell.
I guess, uh, not my granddaddy.
I think it's different.
I guess it's people, uh, it's people that I just, uh, I admire, or you know what I'm saying? I, I wanna be like them because it ain't nobody said I wanna be like, you know what I'm saying? I just, I, I, it ain't me.
I think, I don't know why, I think that's the sense is growing up in the inner city for real. I don't know why. I think the, the motherfuckers in the suburb have the privilege to wanna be like somebody, goddamn it.
Yeah, but I guess, um, a lot of people, uh, like my, uh, my daddy died, I was ten, you know what I'm saying? So, it's, uh, he was like one of the toughest, realest dudes I knew, you know what I'm saying? And he was CEO of motorcycle club, Marine, you know what I'm saying? He respected, you know what I'm saying? So, I, I, I don't have too much, I got memories, but it ain't, like, I wanna be like my daddy, you know what I'm saying? But it's like people, like, growing up, like, that I guess, people that I done been around that I've taken pieces of them, or they daddies, or them being older than me, and put it up on myself. So, um, yeah, they ain't, they ain't, they ain't never been somebody I grew up, so I wanna be like them. I might like what they do though.
Hell.
What, uh, right now, what's your ideal thing that you could do with your juice? If somebody hit your email or hit your phone tomorrow, and this was the perfect fucking scenario for what you wanna do with what you got right now, what would that scenario be for you? Like a perfect collab, a perfect sponsorship, a perfect, I don't know, you wanted this stealer to pick you up?
Man, I wish, I wish Boostie would call me, man.
Okay, then.
Say, ay, man, you got the best hood juice. I can't drink it, cuz you know what I'm saying? But, man, I heard it's the best, and how many people come to me? Yeah, I, I want Boostie calling, cuz I know, I know, man, he gonna sell it, man, I feel he gonna sell it. Boostie gonna sell it, man. Boostie behind with it, man, come on up, man.
That's a good ass answer.
If Boostie come out with it, everybody gonna want it, damn.
That's a good ass answer.
You're right about that.
He gonna understand, we gonna understand.
Hell, yeah.
You right about that.
That's a good ass answer.
What about a secret talent, you got any secret talents? I know everybody got a secret talent.
No, they don't.
You don't think so? I think so, I think everybody got a secret talent.
I'm not saying you don't.
You got a secret talent.
Please disclose if you do. You know how to cook lamb chops or something?
Oh, I can cook.
Front flips.
But a lot of people know I can cook though. That's why it went hard for me to get that recipe, cuz I know how to, I'm already an experiment of the arts. I dabble. I, I, I be, I still play sometime too, and I sell out.
Ah, okay then.
So you cook, cook, and you got the juice with it.
The whole meal.
Yeah, that's not a hidden talent though, that don't count, selling out place, that ain't hidden.
Nah, man.
Do magic.
You could do long division in your head. You gotta have a secret talent.
Alright, well, let's go to the box.
Nothing.
I just do a lot, I just do a lot of shit, and then a secret, I don't know how to do. Cuz I, whatever I know how to do, whatever I try to do, whatever I do, I try to monetize off of it, so.
Man, okay, I would have boxed the question.
Hang TVs, run cable lines, whatever, I'm trying this, but.
I remember you was the cable man, god damn.
Oh, you look like you give niggas hookup.
I'm looking, always looking for a deal.
You ever play heavy level, not heavy level?
Would you rather?
You've heard of this shit before, right?
Yeah, I heard, I ain't never played it.
Today's your lucky day. We gonna play would you rather? Weird as fuck.
Ain't nothing weird, man, it's whatever your mind can perceive.
Okay, okay, um, it's weird as fuck, so you gonna pick two cards out this box right here. And it's gonna be two cards, and each one gonna have a phrase on it. And you gonna decide which one you would rather do, simple and plain, we have the authority. To make you switch out a card, cuz some of the cards some bullshit, and we can be like, yeah, nah, not that one, pick another one. You can't do that. We doing two rounds, would you rather? Yeah, you can, nobody ever took the box from me, it's.
I will, they ain't smart.
You can keep it out, we doing two rounds, just hold it. You got two cards, right? You got two? Yeah, you gotta read them.
Get vanity plates for your car that say douche.
Okay, okay, now, give me that one.
You ain't been keeping the ones out that wasn't good.
We ain't never seen this.
Have your Facebook automatically post one conspiracy theory meme each day.
Start this whole shit over.
Pick two more, them's some bullshit.
Ah, y'all wanna get your boy. Your answer's been too good.
Whatever these two is, we going with them, don't fuck it, maybe.
Be known, be known as the person who had sex with a cow despite never having had sex with a cow.
That's fucked up, that's fucked up.
People would just know you.
That's fucked up.
Bring a prostitute hoe for the holiday.
Ah, yeah, now which one you gonna do?
It ain't like no secret, this my girl friend.
Holy tights on.
This is a hooker. I know your mama know.
Dress stopping at the top of her thighs.
Which one you doing? I'm being known as the person that has sex with the cow.
Gonna be the nigga that fuck cows?
But I ain't never fucked the cow. It don't know, it don't matter what everybody thinks, it's what you know.
But ain't nobody gonna like you.
White folks think, white folks think everybody black gonna kill you, so, we don't.
He fucked that cow, y'all.
But I didn't though.
Date the juice man, be fucking cows, ay.
It's gonna be hard to get some business.
I ain't fucked the cow, man.
Nah, I think you fucked the cow, I think you fucked the cow.
Sorry, this is how the game goes, alright, two more.
You don't want your mama to think you out here tricking.
I would rather my mama think I'm out here tricking than.
But you didn't though, so.
But she thinks you did.
She thinks you did.
She gonna love you anyway.
Mama know me.
And she know you be fucking cows.
And she know everybody else.
Child would be sitting at the, sitting at the table, looking, looking, uh, Shane with a prostitute sitting there.
We just gotta go one time with this prostitute.
We making money.
This is what I do, matter of fact, I ain't, I'm the pimp.
Nah, that's your girl, you ain't pimping. Now, now I'll switch the question.
You got two more to go.
Nah, I'll come to the table with a prostitute though. Cuz I'm arguing the fact with child, now I can see like. Now you just see like people, you gotta study arguing, I ain't fuck the cow, like. You arguing it, unless you just, unless you just master like silence. But my man like, you don't wanna be sitting at the table with prostitutes same time, you don't wanna argue about fucking a cow every day.
We gonna be eating cow, god damn.
That's how I think though, I, now I think about the question good. Why can't my Facebook post a conspiracy?
Everybody at the kitchen table hogging their hamburgers.
Lose a week of your life every time you have sex.
A week though, what if you, what if you supposed to die next week?
Show up to a good friend's wedding wearing only a purple thong.
I just wouldn't be having sex, I don't know.
Oh shit. What's he gonna do?
I wonder what shade of purple, does it matter?
Long as it's a shade of purple, it could be fuchsia, fuck it.
It didn't say no shirt or nothing, did it? Oh, yeah, you in there.
Your best friend wedding.
I guess I'm gonna lose a week.
A, a week, every time?
Every time you have sex.
But still, uh.
So fifty two times of having sex, that's a year off your life.
But if he don't have sex, then he good, right?
You don't know when you gonna die either way, you could die at seventy two or eighty two, you don't know.
Give me a lavender thong. White folks do this shit all the time, and it be funny as fuck.
But you a man though.
You cannot see, a white man would do this at his best friend's wedding, and they'll laugh about this shit.
They'll be mad a little bit, but they definitely laugh.
I'm just saying, your friend, whoever your friend. Yours that they get married, you can go to their wedding.
I mean, I don't know, but I'm, I'm going somebody's.
You have sex fifty two times, that's a year.
That's a year gone.
What was you gonna die, honey, you might know, yeah, you might not wanna see, honey, you died nine nine.
Man, my skin is brown.
Fuck that, I gotta do this one time.
So you, you, you having sex five times a week?
Some weeks, not most weeks, not most weeks at all.
So that's, that means ten weeks, if you had it five times a week, ten weeks is almost a year gone. Yeah, that's three months, it's almost a year gone. Every three months, you lose a year.
You're a woman though.
I ain't gonna have no shirt on.
That's four years a year that you lose.
At least with a man, you know, with kids in there and stuff, he just got a chest, a woman gonna run around naked, titties flopping.
Well, thanks for playing. Damn, your mic. Yeah, them first two was horrible, we never had to revoke two cards, nobody ever pulled two, two lame ass cards out.
So like, do you have like a website or anything?
Nah, I gotta, I gotta be in work though.
Coming soon.
Yeah, there's some, there's some hood stuff going on, going, I'm finna, I'm finna go all the way legit with it. Like I said, I, I've been, I was playing with it for two years, but everything's here.
A lot of hood business shit, ain't no one with it.
You can have dental, anybody, dead or alive, three people. In a restaurant, who you having dental with? Any three people you want.
These is, these is juicy, yeah, when he pull up on you, this is what it gonna look like, watermelon lemonade, we been hitting on him, we gonna put some liquor with him. My bad, my bad, continue, Kato, sorry.
It could be a real person, fake person, it could be screws McDuck if you wanna have dental with them, three people. Dinner time. This is what I just, dinner time.
That's sure.
My daddy. Uh, my grandma. That third one, big time.
Big time, is the third one?
Nah, I'm trying to think of the third.
Anybody.
God, I guess.
Like Jesus? Okay, then.
He gonna go, come down to the table and sit in the chair.
You second or third person that wanted to have dental with Jesus?
Yeah, at least a second.
I think so. I'm gonna call him, see what he got going on.
You think at that table, you're. Your dad and your grandma would be more excited to talk to Jesus than you, and you be sitting there like, trying to get some words in, cuz with Jesus there, so everybody would talk to Jesus.
I, I understand, but I just wanna see him.
I can see some of my family do, be like that. Jesus here, I know, okay, thank you for bringing me back. Hell, man.
Nah, we still got a couple, um, survey questions. How long, if you go to. Where you buying meat from?
Uh, depending on how, well, man, I ain't gonna, I ain't never been up to, on person got specific gas station, specific grocery store.
You buy some ground beef today, take it home, put it in your refrigerator, how long can it stay in your refrigerator? Before you shouldn't be fucking eating it?
You want it to be by way, or you want me to say the extra days?
Nah, I'm, what you, what, if it's your refrigerator?
Uh, well, I'm.
People have their different, their fridge on.
Cuz I, if I, if I live, if I buy it and I let it sit in the refrigerator two days, I, if I ain't cooked it, I gonna put it in the freezer.
So two, but, but what if you didn't know, you forgot?
Uh, five days.
Five days, after five days, you throw it away? Okay, okay then, alright, I ain't too far off, alright.
Then we like Monday to Friday, if Van Cook's gone.
Okay, this, this, I say three, I say three, you got two more on now, you got, you say three too? What you said, like twelve?
I didn't say any number, you fucking asshole. You see how he tried to paint me, look how bumpy y'all looked at me too. You know what, fine, yeah, I said twelve. Fine, now, now what?
I've been told by several people that three days.
If it's bad, it's bad, if it's not, it's not, that's how I do it, some stuff can go bad before. It's different stuff, it's, it's different stuff. And I said, different people have, that fridges is different, they got them on different temperatures, you don't know nothing about none of this shit, so you can't just say there's a set way for all. He keep wanting to bring this up for some reason.
If you could be any kinda animal, what kinda animal are you gonna be? It ain't gotta be real neither, you could be a dragon. Smurf is an animal. It, it ain't.
I'm good on the argument that we don't gotta go.
What is a smurf?
Thank you.
What's a smurf?
A smurf?
Y'all know what a smurf is?
But what is it though?
It's an animal.
What kinda animal?
It's a woodland creature.
I ain't never thought about it, I just call it a smurf.
Please tell me if it's, I'm tripping, a smurf is a, a fuck. That it's an animal?
It's not a plant.
I'm sorry, answer, please answer that question for him.
What would you be? You could be, it's an animal you want. He might wanna be a smurf.
Alright, he might wanna be a, fine.
He got stuck on smurf, I was just saying different animals.
All of us asked about a smurf, nigga, you just.
It's an animal, a giraffe, a llama.
I guess an eagle, man.
With the white head, okay then.
There's some killers.
Ah, that's why, nah, cuz they can fly.
They do what they want to. I know, I've seen videos of them picking up deer, man.
Little baby deers.
Google it, man.
I'm gonna have to, cuz I want.
Nah, I used to work with a dude that, I used to work with a dude, they used to, um, hunt with him, like, uh, it wasn't specific eagles, but it was, uh. Yeah, they, they, um, they hunt with him.
Yeah, I seen that shit before, yeah.
They hit the deer in the spine, and you know what I'm saying?
I ain't know there was hunting, I seen him hunting like squirrels.
I'll show you one, I'll show you video.
Do we got any more questions during our survey before we get the fuck out of here? I think that might be it.
Hey, man, y'all look for it, cuz there's more coming from the man, we appreciate you coming through.
Date the juice man.
I appreciate y'all, man.
We finna drink this juice, god damn.
We finna get, yeah, we wanna get back to the juice and the drinks, talking some more shit and shit.
Spoke with me the podcast, special sessions.
Tell them one more time where to find you at.
Uh, Facebook, George and Fletcher.
You gotta tell them how to spell that, bro.
The one and only two, ain't nobody like me, ain't nobody got same name, nothing, but, uh, uh, J A R A T A N. Uh, Fletcher, if you know how to spell it, I'm gonna spell it for you, George. I spelled just like it, like jar, J A R, uh, ten. Jared's and all that people will get, get that, but yeah. That ain't how you spell it, you're Jerry.
You right, you right. And, um, this is Xenia, this bothers up for you? Oh, man.
Did you call me Xenia?